All right, we're a few minutes late. I want to call the meeting to an end. This is our second meeting in February, February 27th, 2018. I want to welcome each of you here this evening and let us handle the business that's come before the county commission. We'll start off with Kelly. You all for prayer, please. And then Steve Cadel's going to lead us in the Fledge of Allegiance.
If you'll join me. Dear Lord, I want to thank you again for the many blessings that you give us, Lord, and I want to thank you for our county and our community. And as we continue to unite as a community, I ask that you will watch over us, watch over us and guide us. Lord, I ask that you will be with our commissioners, continue to pray for their health and to keep them safe and be able to conduct the county business. Lord, I ask that you will take us home safe, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Kelly. Mr. Cadel, Steve, thank you. First thing is to approve the minutes of the February 13th regular meeting. Oh, first of all, I want to welcome Commissioner McClung back. Missed our last meeting, but let me assure you that he has not been at at touch. He's got a cellphone and he knows how to use it.
And what he really said before the meeting, before the mics got turned on, I'm sitting on this side as opposed to the usual, so that I can put my foot up. But what he said was, have you finally gotten back to the left? He always thought I had those tendencies. So, he's got a mean streak, anyway.
Commissioners, have you had a chance to read the minutes of the February 13th meeting?
I've read the minutes and I'd move that we approve them as presented.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries. Settlements of estates. Kelly, you have those from Joanie?
I do. On behalf of Joanie here, the fiduciary supervisor, I have five names to present. Mary Lou Bowden, William F. Hartsick, Jetty Marie Hilton, Clemente Knapp, and Nellie Beard Knight, and those are all in order.
Okay, motion?
I do. Go ahead, Mike. Go ahead, Mike.
He insists.
Oh, he insists. Well, I knew that we accept these settlements of estate as presented.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries. Exonerations, county splits, consolidations, have those here. As presented by our assessor, Mr. Joe Darnell. I would move that we approve those as presented. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries unanimously. Financials, Ms. Robin?
We have the following arts and rec transfer. Arts and rec committee, $1,750, that's for 1718 DEP permit for stormwater construction at the Sportsplex Carnegie Hall, $50,000, that's for 1718 programming. Alderson, 4th of July, $9,159.33, that's for 1718 entertainment and supplies, and that's a total of $60,909.33 from savings to checking.
I would move that we transfer $60,909.33 from savings to checking in order to pay these arts and rec bills. Is there any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries.
We have two budget revisions, and that is to increase the sheriff's law enforcement overtime in the amount of $320, and that's a reimbursement from AEP.
Motion?
I move that we approve the budget revisions as presented.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries.
We have the following line item transfers. The sheriff's requesting to transfer $200 from training and education to overtime, and that's due to the fact he has a negative in his budget. The second one is the sheriff's request and transfer of $2,500 from group insurance, 703-105, to 716-105 group insurance. The dog warden, this request is due to the transfer of James Shortwitz from security to the dog warden position. The third one is sheriff's requesting a line item transfer from 703-43 automobile supplies to 703-41 departmental supplies in the amount of $3,000. This is to cover the cost of a camera installation in the interview room at the new Rupert office. And the fourth one, Greenberg County Day Report is requesting a line item, $2,000 from 731-21 to 731-341 supplies.
The last one, what does that transfer from, the number?
Laura's.
Yeah.
She's taking it out of her utilities, I think. 731-21, what is that on hers? She didn't write it out, but I know her 341 is supplies. Telephone to supplies. She's short in supplies is what it is, and she had extra money in the telephone line.
Okay, I would move that we approve the line item transfers as read by the county clerk. Is there any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. I have in front of us the bills for these, for the past two weeks, and we have reviewed them, and I would move that we pay those bills as presented this evening. Is there any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries. All right. Public comment for agenda items?
Agenda items, there are none.
New business. Consider hiring a part-time employee for the circuit clerk's office. Please find attached a copy of a resume for Meredith Whited for a part-time position and the background check. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact me. Levon. Levon Arbuckle in the circuit clerk's office would like to fill the part-time position that we funded in our budget last March, a year ago, nearly. She's not replacing this, this, first time this position's been filled. That's what I thought, okay. Motion?
I move that we approve the hiring of Meredith Whited by the circuit clerk's office.
Any discussion?
It seemed a little odd to me that she needed a part-time person waiting almost a year to heart. That's not needed, too bad. Just a comment.
Any other comments or discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries. Consider requests from the Green Bar Valley Economic Development Corporation to join the West Virginia Hardwood Alliance Zone, excuse me. This, for the public, at the last meeting, we had a representative of the Hardwood Alliance here to, with the video, we actually had a one-hour presentation before the meeting started, and then probably a 15-minute presentation during the meeting. And it was Green Bar Valley Economic Developments Corporation's opinion that we should join and, based on Mr. Heggie's recommendation, who I have a lot of confidence in, I would move that we, that Greenberg County, join the West Virginia Hardwood Alliance. Is any discussion? I will point out to my fellow commissioners, that's $3,000 for this year, $3,000 for next year, and for every year after that, it'll be a $500 membership. But Mr. Heggie feels that it's money well spent to help market the timber industries that we have in this county. We'll also be joining at the same time as Pocahontas County, and I understand that once we're on board, Fayette County wants to join. So Fayette County will become the southernmost if they do decide to enter into that agreement. Any other discussion about the motion to join the West Virginia Hardwood Alliance? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries unanimously. Public comment?
Good evening. Thank you for letting me be part of this meeting tonight. I'm here on behalf of the BZA and also the planning commission. And the main reason that we're here is, one, we don't have good communication, two, the interpretation is ordered, and then the manipulation after certain things that are transpired to be a planning commission or the BZA. To give you my first point on communication, there needs to be some kind of communication between the planning commission and the BZA, because we're working on the same thing. Commissioner McClung has been there before, he was part of the BZA, so he knows what we're up against. Commissioner Rose has been part of the planning commission, so he knows what the whole county's up against. There needs to be better communication. Point in case, we had a appeal for BZA a year ago, and then we kind of set it back because we didn't have enough information on that particular applicant. A year later, it seems like that goes around us, it goes back to the planning commission. There wasn't anything in writing saying that it was denied, we were waiting on more information so we could make a decision. I don't know the planning commission knew that it was with the BZA, and that's just kind of the lack of communication that we have as the parts of these two commissions or the two entities in the county. Puts you all in a precarious situation. Then we get back to the interpretation of certain things, and I know that you're all working on the upgrade statewide and trying to get that modernized and a little more work with. But if you all go out, and for instance, you did a spot zoning last week or two weeks ago, and interpretation that spot zoning, I read something out of this, which I'm glad to read, and I'm not certain how you interpret or who can tell you that, okay? Excuse me for a second.
Jack?
Yes, sir.
Sorry to interrupt. They want you to speak into the microphone because they can't hear you. Can you move that? Kelly, the healthy bear?
Where I'm going with this is on the, it's in the amendment procedure, Article 1009, and it gets back into specific section on 100904, which is commercial rezoning. And part of that, where I'm going with this interpretation, is it says that the applicant must receive approval by the planning commission for any changes in the plan submitted for consideration either before or after zoning approval. Failure to do so will constitute the return of the property to its original classification as a zoning district under this ordinance. Now, that being said, it's hard to interpretate if that's before it's planned and the plan's complete, or if it's after the plan, or if it's been 10 years from now, what happens? You know, that whole interpretation is very vague, okay? And this gets back to me, and I know Kelly is good, she's not Wonder Woman, she can't do everything, but it gets back to who, when I come as an applicant for an appeal, how do I know which direction I need to go? Do I go to BZA? Do I go planning commission? And then what do I require, or what do I ask for? Some of these instances that I'm seeing, and Blaine's going to bring up some more information, we're in some other things with spot zoning 30 years ago that's on our table this year, and it's creating issues. I think maybe you're doing spot zoning, and you should do conditional uses, because it's in here and says that. Now, it's more work for somebody, and you're going to have to find somebody to do that work, okay? Now, here's where I go on interpretation, and I'm back to manipulation. And Lowell and I have talked about this on numerous occasions. We've got one two years ago where we had, in the Fort Springs District, we had a family that requested for a mobile home. They had two mobile homes, one was dilapidated, they needed another mobile home. We gave them a special exception to put in the mobile home with stipulations to remove the old dilapidated mobile home. A year went by, and that was the timeframe they had to move. It's been two and a half years since that grant was granted, and they still, it's still there, okay? So that's one of the things. Then getting into some other things, and I made you all some copies just for reference. I've got some more here, too. On the first one that I gave you, and this is another partial that's in Fort Springs District, but it was, and this was some contention 10, almost 12 years ago, where the BZA got sued and county had to pay for the litigation, and the county lost, okay? But where this entailed, that particular entity got a special exception to do a winery, which is vinticulture, which is agriculture, which stipulates and goes on. And he did that, and then he stopped doing that, and then rented out his facility to another entity, which is doing a great success, and I'm sorry to be up here, because those guys don't need to be picked on, because they are success. They're doing it right. But they were basically, as you read what Pat Vai, the prosecuting attorney told us, and gave it back to, for you all to see, which I've got on that back page highlighted, it's strictly to do vinticulture, which is doing wine, okay? And it says there that they'll have to get a special exception if they do anything else. If you look in the last page that I got you on the new Green Bar Valley Visitors Guide, there's an ad in there that those guys are doing, and if you read that ad, and this gets back to interpretation, which I'm calling manipulation, those guys are not doing winery. They're doing winery plus, and that, they're not approved for that. If we let that get by without somebody enforcing or getting them to do, acquire and get the right credentials, et cetera, then that's setting precedence to somebody else can do something, okay? Here we go to the next one that we have, which just went down here back in August, and I gave you that one. Goes back to spot zoning, okay? Back in 1989, the commission spot zoned partial that's up on Brush Road. We had an applicant that came in, and that was spot zoned for the purposes of opening the automobile repair shop. We had an applicant that came into the BZA wanting to get a special exception for that property to put in, I think it's on the back page, to do a storage facility of vehicles, a temporary storage vehicle facility. To me, that's an interpretation that's not the same thing, okay? Now, if the zoning and the interpretation of if it is not according to the plan or what it was credited to the first time, then it reverts back to the original zoning? So that kind of kicks back to, here's an example here, that it's not the same, what's the interpretation? And this is the guidelines that we don't have to work with, okay? And we're trying to bring this up to give you all the information. The other thing, back on the communication side, the map that we have, and I've talked with Kelly about this, and it's a digital map, and you can't print it up very good, but the map that we have does not show all the commercial, the spot zoning commercial partials of property in the county, or at least in the two zoned areas. I don't have an answer for you all, but it's coming, and it's getting more and more every time we go to a meeting, it's like, oh my gosh, what are we going to run into next? It's always some difficult case, and there is always little extremities that somebody's got a special cause here or there, and I'm trying to get the dag on, T's crossed and the I's dotted, and make certain we do what's right. I would think that we need to have better communication with the BZA and the planning commission on what's going on with them, and I really think you all need to pay attention about spot zoning, because here we are 30 years later, and we've got this issue with Snidgers. So, if you all would give it consideration, I'm open for any type of communication. Thank you.
Jack, thank you for bringing these things to our attention. Mr. Phillips? You're president of the BZA.
Yes, yes, I am.
That pays a lot more, too, doesn't it?
I mean, I'm so grateful for everything. My name's Blaine Phillips, and I'm president of the Board of BZA. I want to thank you all for letting us come and speak with you this evening. Big problem that we have when, sound like an old timer, which I am, but since I've been on the BZA when we first started, pretty much what we had on our plate was setback allowances, minor variances, and over the past few years, we're seeing more complex things. Jack's kind of talked about the past and the current. We've got a meeting next week. The structure, the property is owned residential, and they want to construct a light commercial building on the property, and the business that they've had, without going into great details, has been in operation for 13 years at a few locations. Some of them have been at a home occupation, one was at a commercial business. It has grown to require a larger building and employees. The structure's up on Route 219 before the airport. Couple of months ago, we had a hearing where Boone Tractor purchased land across from their property. Similar situation, they were wanting to construct a building, display their equipment there. But here we have at a residence, building a structure solely for commercial. This has come to us, and I'm just wondering as far as, like, going back to the part about communication between the planning commission and us, when you have a situation like this where, yes, it's on a four-acre tract of land, well, yeah, and they're wanting to put this structure to get the business out of the home into a separate building. To me, this seems more like a planning commission for either making it commercial, because, like I said, when they leave, or if they move or sell, we've got this structure in a residential area that was set up for commercial. So how it would be for the next owner, because the exception follows the owner versus the land, and I don't want us, as far as the county, to get into a position where we have problems, like with decisions that have been made in the past. So I guess my plea is, is to where we, if we can communicate with the planning commission so each side knows what we're doing, and if it does come into whether it should be something to come before the board is owning, or it would come into the planning commission, because Jack and I have looked through the book that we've had, and it is cumbersome, it is kind of vague, but it does have the procedures laid out. And if we could, you know, get together, understand the procedures to where we can move forward even with what we have until we get the new one, but I just don't want to see this become a problem, and what we may be facing in the future. But I mean, I've just, in the past two years, you know, like I said, we don't have the usual needing setbacks or simple, not to say the simple things, but, you know, not something that really changes what the zoning is on a set property. That's pretty much what I have to say this evening. Any questions from you all?
Thanks, sir. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're the commissioner on the planning commission. Would it be all right if these two gentlemen attended the next planning commission meeting and shared their concern with the?
Sure. They can go anytime, and they have, have been members of the BZA there at times.
When is the next meeting?
I'm not sure. Ellie can get a, can contact them, or Ellie and Kelly can contact.
What I'm suggesting, Mr. Phillips and Jack, is that you fellows attend the planning commission, get the two groups together, and then out of that, hopefully, we can figure out how we can develop this communication line between the two groups and keep the commission in the loop also.
Yes, Mr. Richter.
Can you take comments if you didn't sign on?
I guess, since I know you.
What about going a little bit further and actually having cross-members, one on each, from one, from the BZA on the planning commission, and one from the planning commission on the BZA, take those messages back and forth? And to me, my interpretation is, you know, the planning commission does set the rules, but you're never going to get a document that's clear enough, comprehensive enough to cover everything, and that's what the BZA's job is, is to interpret. And I would go a step further to say that the BZA makes exceptions based upon the look, the feel, the property, contiguous property owners, takes all those things into account to decide whether it's reasonable or not, and I don't mean this negative. Jack just needs to man up a little bit and make those hard decisions. But if he has good communication going back and forth with the sister organization, it's somebody's job to actually take those back and say, from the BZA to the planning commission, and say, look, we're having this kind of problem, can we now look at maybe strengthening or loosening, or whatever we need to do to those rules to make them work, to keep that communication going? Does that make sense?
Yes, yes. Good suggestions, and they can take that to their joint meeting, and hopefully, we can move positively forward with this.
Since the BZA's job to make those hard decisions is not clear, does it make sense?
One thing I'll add, I wouldn't really comment on, but two things. The planning commission's currently working on with Christie Demuth from WVU. We're redoing the conferencing plan. It's been redone, redone the last couple of years. There's a lot of, we're not totally redoing, but we are cleaning it up. It was redone, but it, there were a lot of flaws in it, so we're redoing that. The zoning ordinance that the guys have to use, Blaine, Jack, and everybody in the BZA, that thing was a mess. It is a total screwed-up mess. It was, been screwed up for years, and we were doing a total rewrite on it. And so those two things are underway, and we are, every meeting, that's what we're doing right now, is working on updating and changing and correcting things. Just for example, the, in the two zoned areas, basically, the new trailer park is basically outlawed, you know, or house, you know, putting house stuff, can't do it. It's against the law. You have to allow, you can- You have to allow, you can put restrictions on green space, parking space, how many can be on an acre, this, that, and the other, you cannot outlaw. So there's just so many things in the zoning ordinance that were put in there years ago that are totally illegal, and we've been ruling on this as that. So we've got to, by the end of this summer, I'm hoping by fall, I'll have both of them rewritten, but we are, we're spending like two hours at every meeting, going through definitions, going through everything, and working continually on that. So I understand what the guys are going through, and we are, we are working on it, but it's gonna take time, because, and when you gotta examine every word in a sentence so that when you make a ruling, that a lawyer or somebody doesn't come back and hammer you, it takes a while. So that's the reason we're using the WVU Law Office to help us to write the new ordinances, so, just making that comment, so.
Mr. Phillips?
One other quick question. In this, what decisions have we made that are made if someone is not compliant? Are you all including more as far as enforcement of decisions made in the new code?
We're gonna have to do something as far as enforcement. Right now, we got, as Jack pointed out there, hoxnaw, but we've got places having weddings that aren't supposed to be having, we've got, we've got several people that are violating the code, and we either need to nail everybody, or we need to change it and allow it. Now, one thing we are talking about allowing in the comprehensive plan is certain farm business-type things, where a farm can have a, legally have, you know, not every week or continual business, but have a corn maze or a down-on-the-farm-days-type thing, where they can come and get a permit from the county, no charge, but just so we know they're having it, and can have those type of agribusiness things in with their farm. Laws is farm-related, and we've got samples from Michigan, counties in Michigan and Pennsylvania, different places, that we're reading and studying how we want to write ours, write farm laws, we're putting that into it, so that if somebody's got an existing farm and they can't have pressure put on by development. So there's several things we're working into this, but there's a lot of things that are, we've got going on now, that we've got to either allow, allow them, or we've got to start enforcing. But it's hard to enforce it right now until we get this thing rewritten, so.
Another question, and this is kind of all sort of personal. If a particular partial property is zoned, reset, then how does that affect the taxation and assessment of the taxes? Then, if that is said, when you answer that question, what's it do to a adjoining property? Does that come for you all, and do you all reassess that once that zoning's been rechanged, or they get special exceptions, or variations, or variances? Because that, again, goes back to the revenue side, so you have revenue to do your course.
I would assume, and-
It hasn't been done, has it?
That if the, something is rezoned and it goes from agriculture to a commercial, then it would be accessed under a commercial, but that's something I'd have to talk to the assessor's office about, because whether they pick it up or not-
It gets back to the whole communication, though. So if we do an extension or variance, do we need to go to the assessors and say, hey, this particular entity is gonna do this, it's a commercial, or it's different than what it was? Because here's the deal, you're all on that board trying to figure out how to fund everything. That's the bottom line, how do we get money to do what we've done? So I'm just trying to figure out what is, if it is, and when it's going to be. The personal side, I don't like about this, because if I've got somebody over here that's doing something that's commercial, and I've got property to sign on, then my property's gonna be worth more for them to assess it.
Depends on what your property is, and that's one reason I'm putting the farm exemption into the zoning, or comprehensive plan, rather.
As far as the assessor picking that up, it may not be picked up until a building permit is secured, and at that point, it would-
Should be.
The assessor would pick it up at that time. We've got a former assessor here, he could probably answer that.
He can answer, he's free.
Okay, okay.
Next person.
Okay, Mr. Paul Davis.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to do this. I'm Paul Davis, I'm from Huntington, West Virginia, and I just want to speak to you today just to kind of introduce myself, and I'll promise not to politic here in front of the commission, but I will tell you this, I have a great, I admire these two ladies, because I will tell you why. My wife is the, one of these two ladies for the Campbell County Commission, so I don't know which positions you guys hold, but my wife Sandy, which I have been married to for thirty-five years, and we have two boys, but she does this for the Campbell County Commission. I am a candidate for Congress, and I'm running here in the third district, and I am a Democrat, so I will tell you that, but I'm a people's Democrat. I'm in it for the right reasons, I'm not in it for any flash or anything else. I think at the end of the day, when we, when we make decisions and we're trying to do things, if we go and do the right things for people, then no matter what your politics are, that will take care of itself. Do I have a three-minute warning? But anyway, I spent the last two days in your guys' delightful county, and one time in my life, I drove chartered tour buses, and so come to Fairleigh a lot, for the state fairgrounds, and then the Greenbrier. But I really never had spent much time in Lewisburg, and the last two days, I've really been just seeing everybody I can in downtown here, and I get to a point, I want to retire, I'm moving from Huntington over here to Greenbrier, it's a delightful place to be. You guys are fortunate, I'm telling you. You come to Huntington for a little while, I'm sorry, I'll be hearing from my mayor and my county commissioners tomorrow. But anyway, I appreciate the opportunity, I'll be spending a lot more time up here, and I hope to maybe have a chance to have a cup of coffee or a lunch or something with your commissioners and others here in town. So, anyway, Paul Davis, thank you.
Nice to meet you, Mr. Davis. Anything else to come before the County Commission? Want to announce again that the Arts and Recreation Grant applications are now being accepted and will be accepted through March 23, 4:30 in the afternoon is the deadline. Anything else? Any other announcements? Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
You have it.
It's been moved. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, meeting adjourned.